Okay, move ahead. Call the meeting of the City Council of City Sonora on May 20th to order. Mayor Proton Hawkins, would you like to lead this in the pledge, please?
I'd love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome.
Uh, Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Plummer?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Sutch?
Here.
Mayor, Mayor Venta?
Oh, here. I'm trying to work this thing. I can't understand what he's saying. Never mind.
Continue.
Yeah.
Fire Chief?
Here.
Police Chief?
Here.
Community Development Director?
Here.
And Administrative Services Director?
Here.
And Deputy City Attorney and City Administrator are also present. Okay, city clerk's report on the question of the agenda.
Agenda was posted at noon on the 17th of May.
Approval of agenda.
Before the...
Yeah.
Before the council approves the agenda, I would ask that you move item I-1 on the due business in advance of the unfinished business items and public area items.
Okay, is there consensus to do that? Yeah?
Absolutely.
All right, go do that. We're moving up, uh, under due business, I, number one, we're moving up to just after consent calendar.
Okay.
And then we'll alter the agenda. Any consensus to do so? D, presentations that are done. E, public comment, non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Is there anyone who would like to speak up or comment? Okay, seen none. Item F is consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. The items, there are no... Item one is following meetings, there are none. Item two is approval to pay invoice on previously budgeted expenses on May 21st, 2019. And item three is approval of dispersments in the amount of $136,066.76 and $10,610.82 on May 10th, 2019 for payroll, inclusive of employee salaries, employer, employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, and leave payouts. Approved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Plummer to approve the consent calendar. It's been seconded by Councilmember Layman, it's a running public comment. Seen none, I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent calendar passes unanimously. Okay, item I, new business. Number one, consideration to approve a special event permit for the Special Olympics torch run to be held June 4th, 2019 on Washington Street and Stockton Road. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we have in the past, we received a request for the Special Olympics torch run, which is scheduled for June 4th. Setup time starting at 9:00, take down time by noon. The actual event will begin at 10:00 and the... It will include a run or procession from the Red Church to the Motherland Fairgrounds, as has been the case in the past. The participants will be escorted in masks by the California Highway Patrol, be using the Southbound Lane of Highway 49. If request has been reviewed by Calpans, we don't have any objections or any additional requirements, and it would be staff's recommendation that you approve a special event event request.
Okay, any questions for staff?
And Officer Cletus is here.
Okay, no questions, we'll open the public comment. Officer Cletus, would you like to... Anything to say?
Good evening. I thank you for your time, and I just wanted to ask to approve the special event permit for the law enforcement and first responder torch run, which will be, and starting from the Red Church and any of the fairgrounds. This year, we have a team of Topeka County first responders, including fire, paramedics, police, sheriff, CHP, and we'll be doing the run with Special Olympics from here, from Topeka County, Special Olympics. Any questions?
Any questions for Officer Cletus?
I'd just like to say thank you for organizing and doing the... Modi?
Any other public comment? Okay, seen none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion based upon staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Williams and seconded by Mayor Proton Hawkins to approve the special improvement, uh, event permit. Is there any further discussion? Seen none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, back to the regular... Item G is unfinished business. Item one is consideration to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 852 revising Title I general provisions regarding penalties and enforcement, administrative citations, and appeals.
Thank you. We have a new electronic thing here, too. So tonight, with staff is asking that you do waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 852. This ordinance deletes Chapter 108, general penalty, adds Chapter 108, general penalties and code enforcement, and adds Chapter 120, administrative citations. It also adds Chapter 124, which is the appeal section, and amends Section 1.04.01, how we get definitions, and deletes Title 11 of administrative procedures. There have been no changes to this ordinance from what you probably saw at your last meeting when we introduced the ordinance.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I have a quick question. On page five, number H, Book of Service, it talks about notifying someone by way of newspaper. And I don't hate to be the one who brings this up, but what if a city doesn't have a newspaper?
Actually, staffs talked about that, if that in the future happens, and I imagine at that point, you're going to give us political counsel and give us some direction on what changes we need to make.
So there isn't a policy for this standard?
Not one that's incorporated into the code. Under state law, there are certain provisions for if there is a lack of a publication of general circulation, because in order to be classified as such, you have to go through... The newspaper has to go through certain processes. But if there isn't one in a current, you know, there are provisions under the government code. And Rochelle is correct. In the event that happens, we'll work with staff to make sure that it's noticed properly.
I hope you don't have to.
Yeah. I think we're...
Us too, Collette.
Anything else?
No.
Any other questions? Okay, then I'll open it for public comment. Does anyone like to speak on this item? Seen none, I will bring it back to the council for more discussion or motion.
I would like to discuss one of the items.
Okay.
And that is 1.08.020, each day is a separate offense. That was described as necessary when public, when there is imminent public danger or hazard. And I would like to, once again, see this... I bring it up to try and get it changed to where we change that, when public, when there's imminent public danger involved. Because then I would wholeheartedly support the... The ordinance. Unlike last time when I voted against it.
Okay. I'm in agreement on that. I think sometimes it turns into a situation where somebody can get punished for something that doesn't necessarily need to happen for a whole bunch, a lot, day after day, or whenever instance is occurred. It's day after day after day. That makes sense.
And I think of a situation, for example, where, Collette, you said that your parking may not meet code, where you have somebody, somebody come by, and they see it, they ticket you, and for whatever reason, a week later, they don't come back for another week or two. That shouldn't be a $2,000 or $3,000 fine, and right now, the way I read it, that's what it comes out to. And I quite agree that if we have a tree overhanging a street or a wall that's going to collapse, then it's appropriate to have a big club, but I think that widely applied, this would be unfair and detrimental.
My feeling about it is it a reasonable hardship, and I think it is not. I think it's an unreasonable hardship, so... And I certainly understand the need to... To have a fine that makes the ordinance enforceable and makes it, um... You know, allows people, doesn't allow people just to think, oh, well, I can, it's not much money, I can handle that. So I find, I think this is an unreasonable hard.
What's this option?
Page three.
Yeah, page three, 108.120.
120.
Oh, 120.
Can we just add some elegant language to the effect that when imminent public danger is involved, without having to go through the whole process, starting from the ground zero?
No. So if the council does want to make that addition, at this point, for second reading, we'd have to re-notice it again, because it's a substantive change from what the council approved for first reading, so that's one version. To, if the council were to direct staff to add language to that effect, it may give a little bit more clarification as to what kind of...
Which items?
Um, so the...
No, I said which items would be...
Yes.
Each would be each day, and which one not.
Right, so, because there need to be that clarity. And again, I'll just remind the council that each day is a separate offense, is there, but there is a requirement that there has to be an inspection. It is not automatic. There is no automatic trigger that says that if you come on a Monday and you cite, and you don't come till Friday, all of a sudden, four days have wrapped up in between. So it's every time, each day basically restarts the clock, and there has to be, there always has to be some type of inspection in order to cite someone. There isn't a fallback provision that says, well, nothing's changed in the last four days, so therefore, it existed the last four days, and therefore, we're citing for four, the four intervening days. So just as a point of collectivity.
So that is, that's laid out in state code, then, that it does not count as a separate offense unless it is actually inspected?
There is, as we went over this in the workshop, the idea of due process. You can't cite for violation that there is no support or visible evidence for. So from a staff perspective, they can't issue a citation to say, well, this, this condition hasn't changed since the last time we inspected, so therefore, you wrap up a violation every single day. They would literally have to come out every single day if they want to cite, in order to then demonstrate that it was inspected, that it's been documented, and therefore, they can cite.
Yes, I am, I'm molten.
Under B5, the city council shall establish a process for granting a hardship waiver by resolution to reduce the amount of fine. Does that apply to... Does that apply to all of this? Or does it only apply to violation of local building and safety codes?
The way that it's drafted right now, it applies for violations of local building and safety codes.
Why would we put it there and not everywhere? I'm just curious.
Because it came with state law that way. That's that, the ordinance to state code is what established that section.
The council can include a provision like that to apply generally, but again, if we, if the council did desire to, we have to re-notice and add that provision into the, a more gentle application.
So maybe it would help to look at where the inspection takes place in the code. Or does it?
For purposes of the every day violation?
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to go through it and determine, as the mayor mentioned, every, every place that would be applicable, and I suspect upon several places where we have to make that change, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it seems to me that the language is very clear here. It says each day during any portion of which a violation is committed, continued and/or permitted, and some of the permitted includes maybe not having gotten the graffiti off of your wall soon enough. I think that we need to... It doesn't disturb me at all to put this off for one session and clarify this a little bit, too. It's really important to me.
So I want to make it real clear, you already have this in your code. It's already there today. So it's an applicable force and effect as of right now, that the staff could use that. I don't know if staff has ever used it. I know they, we haven't since, anything with CBDs since I've been around, but it already is on the books. It's an existing ordinance in this municipal code as of today. The other thing is, um, the duty to give staff some teeth, because if it's a $100 fine, and that's all they have to pay for a $100, or a $100 fine, and there was no multiplier of any sort, there's not a lot of incentive for people to do what they need to do.
If our inspector goes back and does it again, then it is another, another fine, another addition, and over the course of 12 months, I think it was, then that adds up to a considerable portion of money. But I think it, for things that are not dangerous, that just have no teeth, um, without the responsibility of going back, to me, that's important. So I disagree with...
And I'd also say, and Nubia, you can report, but I've seen this in, this is standard language for cities. This isn't something you need to see on.
This, the language that's included in this ordinance does mirror the language under the government code about each day being a separate violation.
Stay in your own room.
Yes. And additionally, if we were to carve out or caveat for it, the, those categories you mentioned, imminent, um, there are so, there are so many violations, pretty much any breach or deviation from what the code allows is a violation in a public instance of the municipal code. So without a little bit more substance and teeth to that, it does leave it potentially vague, and that's definitely something I don't believe anybody would want for the code. We need to have a little bit more clarity.
Okay, so you mentioned that it's in the state governing code. So if we were alternate to, to alter that provision to say only in certain circumstances, that would be, um...
Less...
The state, yeah, be less restricted, therefore, we could do it because of state law, is that correct?
We'd have to, we'd have to evaluate that a little bit more closely, because that is, the default rule is, you can make something more stringent or make it a more stringent requirement, but you can't make it less stringent.
Right.
In this case, arguably, it could, it depends on how it's warranted, so that we'd have to, we'd have to look at what kind of language we add to make sure that we're not providing something that's contrary to that principle.
Take into consideration that there are people out there that will find a reason not to do it if there's a reason in the ordinance.
All we have to do is have the inspector go back, which for final enforcement will be required anyway. And if somebody doesn't go back and a week later says, oh, well, now that's added up to $2,000, which is the clear language of this, and while I mean, I respect our council and am almost at the point of changing my opinion because of your, I don't know, guidance, it's pretty clear that that's, you know, has become a seven-day fine, which adds up. That's, I don't want to over, overwork it, but I believe that for imminent danger...
Would it be a seven-day fine if on the, at the second inspection, would that, would it equate to a seven-day fine or a two-day fine?
It would essentially be the second. So, using the example that I used, or as an example, if a code enforcement official goes out and inspects a property, determines that there's a violation on a Monday, issues a citation for $100 because it's the first violation, does, and notifies the property owner, they need to clean it up within a week. They come back seven days later and find that the condition is still the same. That's a separate second inspection. There would be a noticeable violation for it to be the second violation. It would not be the, essentially, the eighth violation where it would wrap up the intervening seven days.
And that, it states here, the second violation of the same code provision within a 12-month period.
So that would be a $200 violation.
Right.
So essentially, total of $300 violation for the first and the second, and not necessarily what it could be, even for a third or consecutive violation, it would be $500. So it would not wrap up to more than the 300. As I mentioned, if there is going to be a citation for a violation, there has to be an inspection and a support for that particular offense. It, there isn't a presumption of an existing violation, and again, as, as the council knows, there's procedures for appeals on this, and the city has an obligation to support the violation that it observes and cites, and it's a due process issue at that point. It wouldn't stand, a violation where you rack up seven days just because the condition hadn't changed. So the language in .08.020 is committed, continued, or permitted is broad enough to encapsulate every type of condition for the offense, but that doesn't mean that it's automatic. It doesn't mean that the city official has the right to just issue a citation for days where there was no inspection, essentially.
Okay, so it'd be easy to make this really clear and satisfy both the city's needs and my concerns if we just said for which a violation is cited, right? Because you say every time it requires a citation, so let's just put that in the language, and that clears it up completely.
Well, if you're going to do that, you wouldn't want to say inspected and cited, because you have to be inspected, too.
Okay, that's good.
I think that's, that's...
You can make that change, but the provisions of the code already essentially provide for that. You can't assess a fee or a fine unless it's been cited. The citation is...
So that's a matter of state law, then?
The, the, well, it's more of a practical effect. You can't, you can't charge a fine or a fee if you haven't essentially given them a ticket. This is the same, same thing for a traffic ticket, a traffic ticket.
But you say it's required, inspection is required every time there's a citation.
That's a due, that's a due process. That's a due process issue.
That's not codified, that's, that's somewhere, that's an actual, that's legal.
It's a legal principle.
Okay.
What I was referring to in terms of what's codifying state law is the language of it, each day being a separate offense. That language is included in the government code, because the government code lays out the maximum fines that you can, a public agency can assess as a fine. So that language does match the government code.
I get it. It makes sense to me now, so I'm, I guess I'm on board, but I completely agree with what Mark is presenting, because, you know, the last thing I want to do is see somebody, I don't know, have some small offense, and then they just keep getting cited, and next thing you know, they're racked up several thousand dollars in fines, when it may have not necessarily even been inspected, so I, I get it.
See, I had a eureka moment with your latest explanation, and that is, so it has to be cited, but it is each... So it can be cited every day if, for example, for imminent danger. So it's not, one can come back every day if an, if an inspection is so required for imminent danger, but not more frequently.
Or, right, and that is, and that is, I think that's the policy behind the state law and this language that's used pretty much for every jurisdiction, because you don't want to create a situation where you have an inspector who's essentially harassing a property owner and coming four or five times a day. So there has to be some, there has to be some framework to protect the property owner or the individual who owns personal property from undue hardship or government action. So the law does create a framework for that at a minimum.
That's why I'm saying, I was in a eureka moment, but... Sorry to drag everybody through this, then, to come to that point.
It's okay.
But it, with a light reading of it, it sure appears that what I was thinking is the case. Somebody comes out, says my sign is the wrong size or doesn't look pretty enough, and I want to dispute that, and the, the big club is, well, you can't afford to, and our federal government does this all the time with, with wetlands and stuff like that, where if, while you're finding it, if you end up being wrong, you end up, you have a huge fine of, you know, $10,000 a day or something like that. And that's what it looked like here. I think Nubia's clarified that, and it hasn't been an ongoing problem, so...
Another quick reference for the council, on page G of the ordinance for Chapter 1.20, the administrative citation, it does specifically state that anyone who violates the code is subject to administrative citation and penalty, and it requires that enforcement officer charged with enforcement, determine, when there's a determination that the violation has occurred, they have the authority to issue the citation, and that there's specific requirements about what the citation has to contain.
And how it has to be presented.
Correct.
I read that as well. Well, after all that, then I will move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Plummer and seconded by Mayor Proton Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those who call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seen none, the ordinance, ordinance, uh, 852 passes unanimously. Okay, item G, number two, consideration to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 853 revising Title 15 Building and Destruction Regarding Proof and Method of Service for Recordation of Notice and Order Restoration, Exploration, Post Disaster Assessment, and Dangerous Building Code.
Thank you. Again, this is the second reading, and with your approval of the last ordinance, we can move forward, so thank you, guys. I was beginning to think we were going to have to put this one on hold, but, um, so this ordinance does cross-reference with...
ordinance does cross-reference with 852 that you guys just approved and read that, wait the second reading. There have been no changes from the last time that you saw the ordinance, so we are asking that you please wait the second reading and approve this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or motion.
I'll make the motion to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 853.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Williams and seconded by Mayor President Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Okay. Item, item I, number two, is consideration to reappoint Kevin Anderson.
Public hearings.
Oh, yes, I skipped, okay, I'm sorry. H. I was wondering why you didn't have the paperwork to write. Item H is public hearings. Number one is consideration to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 835 repealing and replacing chapter eight point, 12.010 to 8.12.090 regarding defensible space. Chief New?
Well, good evening, mayor, councilmembers, member of the public. We did make some changes in our direction of council, and I met with some of the constituents that have some concerns for clarifying the defensible space ordinance. I think we've come to a, a really good document now that general public can understand. You know, sometimes in the fire service, we use a lot of terminology and jargon that we're used to every day, so it was really nice to be able to sit down and go over something to make sure that everyone can understand it. So you do have a striped version of what was current, or in the previous ordinance, and then the replacements on here. I did find a couple of things in the background that needed to be changed to reflect the 10-foot clearance around the property lines that border a building structure of dwelling, and then also the egress line, so I cleaned that up as well. And then added throughout the ordinance, the area that might be used for exiting evacuation routes, but not limited to the driveways. So staff is asking that we waive the first reading of this ordinance, and if I have any questions, we have an answer for you.
Any questions for staff?
I have.
Concerning such?
I just, this is a silly question, I think, but there's a 10-foot clearance around the house, and then there's a 30-foot clearance. Is the fence considered dead wood?
That's ornamental, so, I mean, we recommend hardening the home, so if you are going to replace it, we would recommend replacing it with something that's not flammable, but no, we don't look at that. We're just looking at the vegetation.
Okay.
And it's, it's zero to 30. It's not a 10-foot clearance around the house. It's a 0 to 30 foot is the defensible space, and then the 30 to 100.
But there's a 10-foot.
That's your own pressures.
That's the 10-foot.
Oh, I thought that was around, oh.
No, so the defensible space is a 0 through 30, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought the maps said, the maps have something about, am I right? Are you sure?
Maybe. CalFire has some pamphlets that they hand out that have even zero to five. They just, they say anything that's flammable, but the, the government section code in 4291 is just zero to 30.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief New?
Hi.
Public comments? Is there anyone who wants to speak on this item?
Hello again, I'm Carrie Liu. You might remember me from two weeks ago when I was one of the aforementioned constituents that came in and expressed concerns. The only reason I came here tonight was to thank the council members, and particularly to thank Chief New for listening to the concerns that I and John Latore had expressed at the last council meeting. We're really appreciative. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but I did talk to him earlier today about the fact that he couldn't come. He was glad I was coming, so I have permission to express both his appreciation and my own for all of the work that was put into this to try to make it, our perspective was to make it more understandable by everyone when we're trying to implement it and take care of some, some language that was of concern. So only reason I'm here is to say thank you again for looking so closely at how we keep ourselves safe in the presence of all this wildfire danger, and thanks for making all the adjustments that you did. I think, I think it's a much stronger ordinance as a result of that, and a great partnership always deserves to be recognized, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Liu?
Not a question, but I'd just like to thank you for your involvement.
Okay, any other public comment on the side? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion or for the discussion or motion.
I'll make the motion to introduce by title ordinance number 835, defensible space ordinance, introduce and waive the first reading.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Williams and seconded by Council, uh, Mayor President Hawkins to introduce the, waive the first reading and introduce title, our ordinance 835. Is there any further discussion? No, I'll call for the motion, all those opposed and a call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We're lucky right now, we've got a lot of rain weather to catch us out of the fire season, but it's coming, so.
Be back.
It will happen.
10% of us, yeah.
Yeah. You get stoned? Oh, wow.
Couple weeks.
Okay, public hearings, item number two is consideration to, consideration to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 854, adding chapter 14.01 to regarding property maintenance. Can you develop the director? Come on.
Thank you. As you guys are very aware, we had a workshop on this ordinance at the last meeting. We did note your concerns and changes that you had requested, and the ordinance before you tonight, we are introducing, we are asking you to introduce and to waive the first reading. We have made the changes requested. On page four, we did include, under improved surfaces, we added the warning or compacted soil, so that it could be a regular soil surface that's compacted that people could have as an improved surface, so we added that. We also, on page eight, under number two at the top, we removed the word graffiti for the interior issues in the interior of a building. And then the last thing that we did is on page 12, under section 14.01.290, under vehicle nuisance, we worked with the chief, and because he's back in town, so that's nice, and we made a couple changes. Item 13 is now reefed unsecured trunk and open engine hood. This was before with locking mechanisms, so it was the language before. And then number 14 is unlocked doors or open windows, which can allow children to enter the vehicle and then lock themselves in. So those were modified to address some of the concerns that you guys had at the last meeting. And the last thing that we did is under 15 and 16, it used to say in excess of 30 days, now it's in excess of six months. And then we also added language in there, and I almost forgot about vehicles being able to have a tarp over them if they're, so that way they can, as part of being covered from the public view. So we added that language in there as well. So I think we had addressed all the concerns that you guys expressed, so kind of for the meeting tonight.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
So I'd just like to thank you. I was concerned as I was reading this, that, because I thought it was a difficult task to, you know, I mean, you talk about and forth, and I was impressed that you caught all of that.
Thanks.
We have to take it.
I just, I thought that we, on page 11, at the very top of the page, where it says, it's talking about performed outside but it's not visible for longer than 72 consecutive hours. I thought we changed that to a week. We didn't? We didn't talk about that?
We changed it originally. It was a shorter time period, and we moved it to 72 hours.
I just, my notes said that it was like a week or two, but, okay. That was the only one I thought you missed.
Okay. Councilmember Quinlan?
Yes, I applaud you for your memory and notes and the change, positive changes. One of the questions I had was, and that was relative to, I think it was page 10, that was debris inside a structure, and then I went to see how much debris is debris, and I could find no definition for debris. So it made trouble to me a little bit. If two bricks, for example, out of place is debris, or if it takes, we have no definition. I think we should have something that clarifies that. Unless I missed it and have forgotten how to spell.
Where are you reading?
Yeah, where's the debris?
Okay, that was.
I'm not sure if it's, if debris is, if it's in the shirt separately.
Well, um...
I don't know. I don't know what section it is, or it's...
Oh, my apologies to everyone for not having... Okay, I'm sorry, no, page eight. B, number one, remove all waste, rubbish, or debris from the interior of the structure. And that's when I went to go see what the definition for how much debris was debris, and couldn't find anything under D.
How much rubbish is rubbish? Sorry.
Well, but that's, that meant more of a definition of rotting type stuff, or...
It's not.
In fact, there's not a definition for waste.
Or, or rubbish.
Rubbish or debris.
Because this is for a, a closed structure, right?
Inside, correct.
Yeah, and I think that it's something that we should have some definition.
We have litter.
Well, litter to my wife is different from litter to me by a huge margin.
One word that is defined is refuse. And that includes the, the cross-reference for rubbish and garbage. The question, though, is at what point can we define volume for anything that could fall into that category? That would be a little difficult from a practical perspective. Staff can probably explain this better than I could, but where, where do we draw that line?
I didn't come without a solution.
Okay.
And let's just, if we just put excessive, which is still open to interpretation, but at least implies that there's a fair bit of it.
So you'd be changing it from any waste to excessive waste?
All excessive waste?
Yeah. I, it's, it's still a weak solution, but it doesn't go into defining, you know, cubic yards or...
Well, actually, if it's any waste, it's more than zero, so, right? So that's actually better defined as any waste. Excessives undefined.
Well, I don't want a loose brick to count as, as debris and generate fines and all that. Well, I don't think it's probable. I just think that for good law, we ought to have something that can go forward for a long time.
The, this particular subsection talks about the standards for securing. So you have to start with the initial requirement that the owner is required to secure the premises, and then go through and determine whether or not they've secured it and cleaned it up to the satisfaction of the code. So we have to start with the idea that there could be a violation by not securing property, and then determining whether because it's vacant to the level necessary that staff determines to avoid any kind of fire hazards. So excessive doesn't necessarily get you there because, again, it's going to be a case-by-case basis. I do, I do understand the concern of, but we have to start with the idea that the violate, the underlying violation would be not securing the premise to begin with, and then...
I thought that was presumed in to, to meet the code, it's presumed it's going to have the half-inch, you know, through the studs, bolts, and half-inch plywood and all that stuff. And this is what's inside that can't be seen, correct?
If it's secured properly, that's correct.
Okay. To be secured properly, does that require it be inspected by the, by a building inspector or somebody from the city?
I believe that that would be part of the requirement to ensure that it's secured properly. So it's, it's not just what the property owner thinks is sufficient, but what the city feels is sufficient. Because the idea behind this is preventing intruders or maybe, you know, some type of vagrant activity that could lead to criminal activity within the unsecured structure. Intentional fire.
Or vapor, for rat, mice, and all the others.
Which does create a public, a public health hazard.
Right.
But a pile of sand left in there from the failed attempt to start rebuilding it doesn't create much in the way of hazard, and yet by the ordinance would generate fines, right?
It could if it's cited. The, the problem with adding excessive is that it's...
It's open to interpretation.
It's open to interpretation and could be used against the city despite the council's best intention of protecting the property.
Every enforcement could come back to us for definition. Well, okay, that's something I find trouble. And then on page 13, the spelling, I think it says designed enforcement, is that meant to be designated enforcement officer? On the second line of 300.300?
It looks like it should be.
Well, the first line, but the second line, okay.
Designated, yeah. That's a minor, that's a minor clarification.
Right, no, I know where you, I just thought I'd point it out.
We can make that change.
About two seconds.
Yeah, that one, that one's not a change in the section.
And maybe someone else can talk, or I'll start.
Is there any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I felt we went through this pretty well, so I'm, I'm confident that we did now.
Back to Mark, if you have any...
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, on page 10, non-conforming buildings and structures. Does that include the, only the law-abiding, or does that include homeless structures as well?
So I understand the question aside.
Okay, well, there are lots of makeshift lean-tos and stuff that end up being shelters and structures, and I would really like to see laws applied equally across the board. Of course, punishment part of that is hard, but that was, that was a question. And then I had another question, that is, since we talked at length, there's a whole section dedicated to graffiti. How do we punish the taggers when they get caught?
That's a question you'll have to ask the chief. That's a law enforcement question.
Because if we punish the law-abiding who have nothing to do with it, then there should be some severity for putting other people in a binding like that.
That's, again, a law enforcement question.
This particular titled chapter applies to property maintenance, so it's more directed to a property owner or tenant, someone in charge of the property itself, but there, as a chief will listen, there are other criminal provisions that, you know, apply from the perspective of enforcing the law against the person who commits the act.
Right, but you understand why I'm a little disturbed about punishing the victim of tagging, and I don't know how severely we punish the taggers, but I would hope that it would at least be worse than...
When we find out.
California state laws, it's either misdemeanor or felony, depending on the... California state laws, it's either misdemeanor or felony, depending on the, the value of the damage you do by causing this vandalism and/or graffiti. So it falls under 594 PC of the California Penal Code. And it's, it's clearly incitable, regular when we can, when we can prove it.
Right.
Actually, we just did it not too long ago, decided to flash arrest of somebody for that felony section. So there is an existing state provision for that.
Thank you very much, Chief.
And because we switched the framework for these codes, that you start off as an infraction, it's not an automatic misdemeanor unless the code specifically states, the property owner under this example or this section would be fined through an administrative citation and not necessarily issued or subject to misdemeanor fine.
Any other questions for Stan?
Yes. Point two nine zero, number twelve.
On page?
On page twelve.
Okay.
It says loose or damaged metal trim or clips. I think I'd like to see that could cause injury, because one can be damaged or, I mean, bashed in on the side from parking in a lot rash. And we, the whole point of the rest of those is to prevent people from getting, you know, poked, scratched, cut, or otherwise injured.
Teri, this is your code section again.
Okay, here, let me preface this. From the existing force, I don't, wouldn't expect anything of that nature. But the laws reads is if it's been crushed by somebody opening a door, it could.
So when I look at this, I look at, these are examples of what could be a nuisance. And it lists these out as possible examples. A lot of time, when you have loose or damaged metal trim or clips, it's in conjunction with a vehicle that's been left or abandoned. Not necessarily somebody we see parked in front of Saymart. So that, these are just, it just runs down a list of, of things that contribute to a vehicle nuisance.
Okay, and while you're up here, it says no unlocked, the bed of a pickup, that to me is a functional equivalent to a trunk, but most of them can't be closed. Does that have a legal difference from a trunk?
Yes, it's not considered a trunk. The bed of a pickup is not considered a trunk.
That was just a question I had.
Correct.
Functionally, to me, it's the same thing, but...
From a legal perspective, it's an issue of something being plain sight as opposed to secure for purposes of usually the Fourth Amendment when you're, you're talking about. An illusion of privacy and extradition for instance.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Any other questions? Any other questions for Stan? Okay, then I'm going to open up to public comment. Does anyone like to speak on the side?
Hi there, Carrie Lou again. My only question is about the definition of vacant building on page six. I was wondering if there's an and or between the two subdivisions.
So you're asking vacant building and/or vacant structure, is that what you're?
No, vacant building or vacant structure means any building, dwelling, or other structure, colon, and then there are two subdivisions. I was wondering if something qualifies as a vacant building or vacant structure only if it satisfies both of those two subdivisions, or whether it's an either-or.
So from, from the language standpoint, unless there's an and, specifically, it could be an or, but that could be a form of clarification for the council if they want to clarify that. But the way this, this reads, it's, it's an or. It would not, it would have to require an and if it was meant to be both, I think, concurrent.
Just a suggestion to clarify it, that way there's no question in anyone's mind.
Thank you for your careful reading.
Okay, is there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Good discussion and no motion.
Do we consider adding an or there?
No, that's, that's what we discussion, but...
I wanted clarifying what Ms. Lou brought up. So if there's no doors, windows, and there's exposure to the elements, but the owner gives permission for a person to live there.
It's still, it would still be considered a vacant property because it would fall under number two. So even if someone is allowed to live there, under this definition, it would still be a vacant structure.
Okay.
So, so if I have a broken window in my house, I'm living in a vacant structure?
So as to allow uncontrolled access to the interior or exposure to the elements, as a property owner, you maintain control or uncontrolled access of the property? So it really depends on a case-by-case basis. A broken window in and of itself doesn't mean that your building is automatically vacant, but it could under the circumstances. It just, again, it depends on, on several other factors, and mostly left to the inspector to determine whether or not it meets this definition.
You probably have a legal right to be there.
Yeah, if you... Well, yeah, but I'm, but I'm saying if it's or, then only two applies. You have a broken window, you're living in a vacant building, a broken door.
If you do want to make it more stringent in terms of what is defined as a vacant structure, then the, the recommendation would be to include an and. So there's two requirements for it to be...
One and two have to be...
Yeah, they both have to be present and...
That's what Ms. Lou is bringing up is how do we, how do we want to define that? As counsel.
I'm going to say we add and. That is all covered.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion?
Are you still open for public comment on that?
Actually, both public comment.
Oh, okay, because perhaps you misunderstood my concern.
I thought you were saying an between...
I wanted to know which one, because...
Could the mayor, I recommend...
Yeah, sorry, you said it's...
There's going to be comment from the public, we need to reopen.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. You're the only one who commented, so I might as well go ahead and reopen the comment. That's all right with the council.
So, right, so my question was just, I was sitting here reading it, and I, I wasn't clear. I can see where both of these conditions would be of concern. It does not seem to me that the only concern is when there is an otherwise abandoned structure that has broken windows or doors that allows uncontrolled access. Again, you know, I mean, my comments, as with the last meeting, are based on things I've seen around and wanting to make sure that we can adequately take care of things. And it seems to me that if there is a building that is lacking the habitual presence of persons, or at which substantially all lawful business operation or residential occupancy has ceased, common sense reading says that that's vacant even if you don't have doors, windows, or other openings broken or missing so as to allow uncontrolled access. So, so I wanted to know what the interpretation was, but I, I guess I'm a little concerned if you go for and. Perhaps I should have said that earlier.
So, so, so I guess what you're recommending, recommending is that it should be or. There should be an or.
I don't know necessarily what it would be, because I've been hearing your, your discussion there. You may have some concern based on a possible reading of what a broken door, window, or other opening is, but, you know, it is modified by uncontrolled access. But if you have people now, I don't know. But if there's uncontrolled access, almost by definition, you're not satisfying the condition, the first condition. So, I just wanted to throw it out there. But I can think of a, what I would consider to be vacant building in my neighborhood, and I think it's vacant regardless of whether there, there's unfettered access to the inside. I just look at what's happening at the property, because there's no one there regularly. So I would just, I would want to make sure that the city has a good enforcement mechanism for something like that, if it's creating any kind of public nuisance.
So the question is, how strict do you want to be? If it's an and, both conditions have to be satisfied. If it is as stated, either condition has to be satisfied.
Exactly.
In either event, I do recommend a clarification, so it should read and/or.
Well, I'm certain...
Not, not both, not both, not both, one or the other.
This is probably going to, vacant structure probably falling into the fire department as well. I would recommend that one or the other, not both have to exist, just because, as Ms. Lou pointed out, if you have a building that is non-operational anymore, there's no one living there, all the windows and doors can be intact, but it's a vacant structure, we want to make sure that it's boarded up properly, and no one's going to have access to it to start a fire, have some type of health concern with rodents and everything. So that would be my recommendation.
Any questions?
Well, I was, number two is whose doors, windows, or other openings are broken or missing so as to allow uncontrolled access? And I think that's what defines that, so it's not just you have a broken window in your house.
Correct. So using the mayor's example, if there was a broken window, and it was, you put something over it, or there's some indication that it was going to be repaired, and it was only temporary, that would be an example of not allowing this uncontrolled access. And the idea is that it's visibly abandoned, that it's not being fixed.
Okay, is there any further public comment?
Right.
I'll make sure. For, any further public comment? Okay, now I'll bring it back to, back again to the council.
So here's my concern. I know of buildings that people are living in which are not, which residential occupancy has ceased. So I want to make sure that if there's a building out there that people are living in and creating fires, which we've seen happen, that we have enough in this ordinance to, to be able to move forward in probably getting rid of that vacant structure or building.
Or at least secured.
And in many cases, you can't secure it, so...
Depending, depending on the severity of the condition on the property that the city does have, this title creates several options that can be taken, and it could be something, and I know the fire chief could probably explain this better, but you can board it up, you can cite the property owner and hope that they take care of the issue. You can cite them, you can go to court and request an inspection and abatement warrant to take care of it. The city can take care of the condition itself to prevent further damage or someone hurting themselves on the property. So there are several options. And that's, that was one of the reasons that staff worked through this title to, to give the enforcement official options in teeth in order to prevent those types of situations.
Kami, are you still talking about the vacant building or vacant structure?
Yeah, vacant building or vacant structure. I just want to make sure the tools are there for the buildings that are, where there's a lot of exposure to the elements, and that means you're not going to be able to board it up.
The tools are there.
Okay. Without and.
The old sawmill that used to be on, across from the fairgrounds, we just pull that down. Then we stick it, we didn't, somebody did.
Oh, no.
Somebody, somebody did it.
We're not in this...
It's been a long time coming.
Well, unless they are health workers, then go through the process.
I agree with the way it is written.
With or.
So, the way it's written is an implied and. Is that, is that what you're saying?
The way that it's written is an implied or.
Okay.
Recommendation is we, we add a or. It's either going to be and, or it's going to be or. Fire chief's recommendation is for it to be or, and that's the way that we've interpreted as well. So the staff's recommendation overall would be that it's an or.
And I propose, if we need to motion, that we add or pursuant to our chief's new suggestion.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Well, we really don't have to add or.
We don't have to, but it will be clearer, our council, our fire chief.
Based on, based on the concerns raised, yes, I, we should include, we should include, our city council should include or.
That is between items one and two.
Okay.
All right.
Just to be clear where it goes, as well as what it is.
All right.
No, I, we still haven't really dealt with, are we going to ever get any definition for debris? I mean, what's debris? We're going to cite people for it. We need a definition of what is. Hypothetically, they could be charged a thousand dollars if they didn't do it right.
So did you stake up my code definitions?
I don't believe there is. There may be some references in the health and safety code, maybe in the fire code, but it's one of those words that it's not a technical term. So it's really open to interpretation. And again, in order to provide staff the flexibility that it needs to, the idea in that section is to make sure that we're reducing fire hazards inside. So with, with that in mind...
Flammable debris? Would that be meeting what we're looking for then? Because I was thinking of all mineral-type debris or metallic and stuff, but all of a sudden you say flammable, well, that, I concede the concern.
The problem, the other problem is that debris in general might be an attract, an attraction to vermin. So that could be another issue. It could really putting, putting a...
Well, we haven't had a problem with that.
Adjective to it, I don't think, in that order.
Kind of a suggestion. Whereas, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the code that isn't fully defined, a misdemeanor as we deal with it on a regular basis. If we move forward, if there becomes an issue and we need further clarification, we can modify this ordinance down the road to further clarify a section that becomes an issue, because staff can bring it forward and say, and you guys are going to know because you're going to have people calling you, or there's going to be somebody appealing some decision by staff. So if it becomes an issue, we can modify it later and add a definition to further clarify if it becomes an issue. But I would recommend we move forward with what we have, because not everything's going to be defined in the ordinance. Not every word will be, so...
Further discussion and no motion.
Well, I think we ought to add or into, that was, well, on page six, vacant building. And where is that best placed? In front, or right as the first word of two?
No, maybe the last word of one.
Last word of one.
What will happen is, number one, if that period's going to change to a semicolon, is there will be an or added near that.
Since, since this is the first reading, could we look at a, for the second reading, a debris and have a definition?
Well, you can, but we have to notice it, because that would be a substance of change. You, you can, but we have to notice it, because that would be a substance of change between the first and second reading. Any changes to the code can be added by motion, but they have to be said now.
Well, being the obstructive one who brought it up, I'm satisfied at this moment to go forward with this.
I'll second the motion.
He didn't make a motion, yeah.
How did he make the motion then? Add "or," and I'll second.
It was just a clause. It was just the end. No, he was just talking about the end.
The "or."
Go ahead.
Okay, I will move to approve with the additional "or" on page six pursuant to things that are legal canceling. Now, I already know that was between one and two vacant buildings to approve, which one was the ordinance number eight-five-four.
Introduce and wait for a reading.
We have to introduce the ordinance.
Well, that's okay. We've got it covered.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved, and moved by council member Plummer and seconded by council member Williams to introduce by title ordinance number eight, eight fifty-four, property maintenance code and wait for a first read. Is there any further discussion? If not, off with a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And pass unanimously. Okay. Item I is new business, we worry about number one. Number two is consideration to reappoint Kevin Anderson to the city of Sonora planning commission for a four-year term. Director Kellaw.
Thank you. Staff is recommending that the mayor, with the approval of the council, does reappoint Kevin Anderson to the planning commission. He has done a wonderful job. He's young, and it's nice to have an in perspective on the planning commission for somebody that actually has never been in service. So, it's all good. But I would recommend, he's a, he's a wonderful planning commissioner.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll ask for a public comment. Any one of the public comment? Uh, any other counsel for a comment?
I just said, ran into a friend of his today, and his friend was telling me how honest and basically how truthful for an individual he is. That was nice to hear.
I also work within college. It's, it's great to work, and it's really good work.
Looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion to appoint city resident Kevin Anderson to serve as a planning commissioner on the city of Sonora planning commission.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we move by council member Williams and seconded by council member Plummer. Or, Mayor Plummer, Mayor Preston Hawkins to appoint Kevin Anderson, reappoint Kevin Anderson to the planning commission. Off with a question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, item three is consideration to adopt resolution number oh-five dash two-zero dash two thousand nineteen dash A, establishing the GAN appropriations limit for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Director Horsky.
Hi, good evening. This ordinance is to establish our GAN limit for two thousand, for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. The limit is at forty-six million, nine forty-eight. The appropriation for the city is well below that, so for us, it's just a technicality that we pass this ordinance. On the ordinance, just a note, there is a error, and we need to change the years on the very right column from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty.
Let me also correct the spelling of my name.
Yes. One L.
By that time, you were four years, we sound maybe.
Okay. Is there any questions for, is there any question for Director Horsky?
Do you have one question? Usually, GAN limits come with the actual budget. Is there any ramifications of doing it early?
No, no. Budget will come on June third, will be a proposed budget.
Okay. All right.
But blocking of forty-five million.
To spend.
To be able to spend. Okay, is there any questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I'll move to approve resolution number five twenty, twenty nineteen A, establishing the GAN appropriations of it for fiscal year two thousand nineteen slash two thousand twenty.
Okay, so we move by Mayor Preston Hawkins and seconded by council member Plummer to approve resolution oh-five twenty, twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen A. Is there any further discussion? None, off with a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Item number four, consider for information and possible direction of findings and recommendations of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen grand jury report on the TCEDA EPCTC oversight. Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On, on May ninth, grand jury did release a portion of the grand jury report for eighteen nineteen that specifically addressed their continued review of the TCEDA, as well as additional review, review of the economic prosperity council of Bolling County. The report does contain thirteen bindings and five recommendations, and concludes that the responsible parties as to the failure of the TCEDA were the TCEDA board directors. The report's been attached in your packet. I don't intend to go through that report, but only to point out that as city administrator, I've been directed to respond to two recommendations within the document. The first has to do with the city and county continuing their investment in economic development going forward, and the second has to do with continued education of elected officials and managers on code of conduct and code of ethics. So, I'll be preparing the response within the required sixty days with the assistance of the city attorney. So, with that, the council may have comments that they want to make, or questions that they want to pose to staff, and, and it is an item that is subject to public comment as well.
Okay. So, are there any questions to staff?
Yes, I guess, unless one of the ladies would like to go first. Do, have we, or are we even going to be able to nail down how much this going to cost for the purse and other ongoing expenses?
So, is the wife got some tips?
Yeah, that's...
Short answer is yes. I can provide the council on that date if you need, or you can check with me if you'd like.
This is, yeah. Correct, this is the grand jury report, so. Any, any questions for staff? Seeing none? Okay, then I'm going to open up the public comment.
Hi, Barbara Dressler. I just, I feel that the city council hasn't received adequate credit for having the courage to bring TCEDA to a reckoning for the misuse of public funds and mismanagement, so I just, I think you need a big thank you. Despite Sonora's smaller role in the larger GPA, JPA partnership, our city council made a very courageous decision to leave the JPA, despite tremendous pressure from local interests, which did not have the public's welfare as their first priority. So, I think you did a great job. The foremost issue with the TCEDA was lack of transparency with the public. That fight is not yet won. Recently, county council Sarah Correo declined to release the report that she did under the recommendation of the grand jury regarding conflict of interest among TCEDA board members, citing attorney-client privilege. Conflict of interest is one of the most corrosive issues in the government and a haven of elected officials for using their position for gain or influence, and I'm not sure that it might have come to that level, but I think we need to know where there was conflict of interest, and I think that report should be available to the public. The TCEDA board can vote to waive attorney-client privilege and have this report released. Because the city council led in the ultimate demise of this iteration of TCEDA, this is the public forum where I can ask that our present and former city council slash TCEDA board members make releasing this conflict of interest report an agenda item at the next TCEDA board member, board meeting. This will allow the public to address it, address those TCEDA board members who may not have honored their duty to state conflicts when they occur and yet continue in office. The refusal to reple, reple, release the report is an example of why we have had so many public record requests when government information is withheld unjustly from the public. I understand many are anxious to put the repercussions of TCEDA behind us, but the most elemental part of its breach of trust remains in place. I'm asking our city council, TCEDA board members, to continue your leadership and place this issue on the TCEDA agenda as a public forum for community response. Thank you.
Any questions for Miss Dressler? Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for comment.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm going to go on the record. As you all know, I was on this board for two years. If you remember, my first question was to do with the budget that did not add up correctly. At that time, I asked the board to put together a finance committee of board members. That never happened. Additionally, I could not get anyone to agree with me, including my fellow council member at that time. I went to county council about my concern regarding a conflict of interest. Nothing ever happened, except I was told that they talked to Mr. Kopa, but nothing ever came back to the board regarding that conflict. I was told by one member of the board, when I would ask questions, that the board was, was becoming divisive. And one of my questions was, each, at each meeting, would you bring a list of your successes in the city and in the county? Never happened. Of the seven board members, I was probably the only board member that was concerned with what was going on. I appointed myself as mayor to that board because I had people come to me and say, "What is the city getting out of this?" I am glad that Ken Perkins filed the lawsuit, and that the grand jury brought forth the information to the general public, and that the U D did their investigation. Larry worked at the pleasure of the board, and when you can wrap yourself around all of your board members to get what you want, that's exactly what happened. This was a good old boys' club, and I'm sorry that it went that way. We need economic development in the city and in the county to survive. So, I'm, I'm glad that it all turned out the way it did, and I'm proud of our council that we made the decision to move away from this board when we did. And I agree one hundred percent with Ms. Dressler. The conflict needs to come out, and hopefully, the two board members sitting here will bring that up and get it agendized for the next meeting. Thank you.
I mean, that a comment? I'll make a comment. Wait, what? I will second Ms. Williams. Appreciation of the, especially three entities that brought this to the light of the public. Thank you very much, Alex. Your reporting was incredible and incredibly helpful, both for the public knowledge and learning here on the board. We, or at least I especially appreciate the grand jury, and they're delving into it and then coming back with this additional report. Then Ken Perkins, who has been malign publicly a great deal, deserves a lot of recognition for taking it on his shoulders to ask for documentation and proof. I don't want to disparage anyone, but I do not understand the compensation and golden parachute where even with cause, our past director was going to get better than twice of the average, the average income for the county. It's watering the bridge now, but going forward, we want to have something that includes metrics, and where we, we know if we're going the right direction or not. So, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Sesh, do you have anything?
Just that I, I support Barbara Dressler's request of the TCEDA board. Otherwise...
I do now. I've been very quiet for a while, so, you know, when we, Jim, you know, the mayor appointed myself and, and, you know, to this board, it was, it was a big deal to me. Quite frankly, Connie got the, to be honest, the crap kicked out of her publicly, and it's the truth. You know it, I know it, so does everybody else in this room know it. You, you just, I mean, they were, they wanted you to put you on a stick and set you on fire. It was that bad. And I've always tried to approach things, even going into this, there's a lot of pressure on the mayor and myself to just, oh, nope, everything's good, everything's fine. And then there was Connie going, hey, let's look at this, no, let's look at this, let's look at this, these are facts, this is what makes up facts. So, I know that Jim and myself really tried to approach a bit, Jim, if I'm speaking out of line, let me know, but I know we tried to approach things with caution, because everyone, no matter what happens, deserves to be treated fairly. And I remember telling Larry this and the rest of the board, come on here, look, I'm not, the only side I'm on is for the city of Sonora. That's who I represent, that's who put me in this office, and I'm thankful to be here. So, we want to do everything fairly, and the more we started digging in, the more I was like, you know, this, this is not good. And it's, it's all here. The conflict of interest, you know, Barbara, I'd like to sit down with you and talk with you more. I can't talk about anything that happened behind closed doors, I'm legally precluded from doing so, but I, I guess I'll just say it the best way I can. I'm definitely going to take that under advisement, if that makes sense. But I, I'm, you know, I, I'm sorry it took this long. I mean, Connie, you were on there for...
Two years.
Two years. And now we're coming up on close to another two years. It took almost four years for this to come to a head. A lawsuit, a grand jury investigation, a management audit, and a financial audit, and then suddenly, the county goes, hey, let's shut this down, and by the way, the city's not working with us. It's kind of the way it came across to me in my mind. And, okay, wait a second, we were here to work with the county, that's what we should do, because we're only, in my opinion, we're only good together, but I felt that, quite frankly, that we got the short end of the stick on this, and then we got beat with the stick for asking questions. So, I am sorry it happened. I wish Ken was here today so I could apologize to him, even though, you know, I wasn't on the board. Connie, you, like I said, you took it and ran with it, and then I wanted to beat you with it. But the reality is, is that... But the reality is, is that, um, you know, we're here, I personally, going forward, wanna see the city set up something, but that's on a whole nother matter and a whole nother discussion. Um, but we need economic development, we're a county of 50,000 people, we need jobs, we need jobs to retain the people that, you know, live here and shop here and work here and everything, we need those jobs for people, so, maybe I've said too much.
Well, I can't say it any, any different than, than what my colleagues have said. Um... I thought I knew what I was gonna say, now I don't. Other than just to echo everything that the rest of you have said, um, what, what really bothers me a lot is the, um, blaming the failure of the EDA on, on the city. Because, because members questioned how it was going. And from Connie on to, um, when we, when Matt and I got on. As you know, the vote was taken by the, the board itself in, in closed session to, uh, to have attorney-client privilege, so I can't disclose any of the items that's, was in But, uh, I think we've come to, we've come to a point to where we need to revisit that Open government is always best in the sunshine, and, um, I don't know if there's enough votes on the EDA to do that. Um, it's a several, seven-member board by statute, there's only five members now, that would take four of the five, if I'm reading the law correctly, um, to overturn, or to do that, and I don't know if there's enough votes to do that. Um, so we will see. I'd like to look forward, I'd like to actually be finished with, with this, um, and, uh, you know, wondering how that's all gonna work out in, in the grand scheme of things, if there's gonna be delays in, in how we go our separate ways, I guess. But, um, but getting, actually getting back to your staff, to, to what's on the agenda, I think it's, it's a very good idea to, to follow the, uh, the grand jury's findings, to have ethics training for us, and to, um, I've lost my train of thought, what's the other item? One? Oh, for economic development, and to go, which is kind of paramount, especially we react today. So, um, I don't know if you need direction from the council to ju- okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I will, I will add, if the council wants to make a motion to direct the TCEDA board members to request that the matter of waiving privilege be on the agenda, that is appropriate motion for the council to take, if you want to do that. If you want to make that kind of...
I will make that motion.
All right, just a second there. Okay. Is there, uh, that means we're now open back up to public comment, correct? Okay. Is there any public comment on this side?
I think that's all I can say.
Okay.
It's the only way to get public comment, against the TCEDA.
Is there any further discussion?
Courage. You didn't even say anything, I said, "Anymore."
Okay, any, um, if there's no further comment, um, call for a question, I was a favor, so you got it?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is unanimous. All right. Is there any further, uh, nothing further on that item then? We will go to item five, consider, consider for information a possible direction, a memorandum for the city attorney regarding council member compensation. Uh, is this me?
Yes.
This is me.
Thank you, Mayor, and council. This item is a follow-up to, um, I think a request or a question from council member such, at least I'm sure it was the last minute of the previous meeting, uh, to determine what options the council has as it relates to salaries or stipend under, under current law. The government code does provide that the council can be compensated for its services, so each member is authorized to do that. Um, it is predicated on population, so it, it, it varies basically in scale. And based off the current population, the amount that the Sonora City council members each receive, the salary of up to $300, that is classified in the government code. However, if the council wants to make any changes to that compensation or establish a set compensation, that action must be, must be taken through an ordinance. In consultation with the city administrator and looking at past records, it does appear that in 2009, I believe, there was a budgetary adjustment or a decision to waive that right to, to basically reduce the number. So, the mayor, um, took a cut to, I think it was, what, two...
From 300 to 150.
Correct, 150, and each council member, um, to 125. That act- action was later memorialized for a resolution formally in 2014, and my understanding is that those are the numbers that are currently applicable. So, if there is going to be any changes to that, it has to be, it has to be done through an ordinance. The government code does provide for up to a 5% increase annually since the last adjustment. That is something that the council can do. Um, so depending on when was the last, the, the last adjustment, we can calculate that and essentially tack, tack that on. So, that's the basic structure or framework for making the type of adjustments to council member salaries. There is one caveat, but it's mostly applicable in cities that have an elected mayor. The mayor does have the ability to receive a separate and higher amount for salary. In this case, because the mayor is potentially rotating and it is, it's a position that's filled from a council member, everyone's salary would be the same.
Could it not be effective until the next election?
Correct, and it would not be effective until the next, in the next election. So, it would not apply to anyone equally.
Right. Okay, uh, questions for staff?
Um, I, well, I have a question, or just to sort of, I'm, I'm just curious about the history, why would, do you know why it was memorialized in 2014?
I could share the resolution with you, but that's, that's, uh, city attorney, uh, city attorney prepared the resolution, and because of how it was done, it was, it was done to memorialize it and also to put council members on notice that they could be entitled to some additional compensation during a time period where the adjustment was made until it should have been effective, so...
Any other questions for staff?
Well, no, in 2009, when it was, uh, basically cut in half, there was also some stuff with health insurance, and that's worth thing with the council. Not trying to, but it was, yeah, it was, um, the, the cutting of the salaries was something that was done more politically, um, at least in my humble opinion, and keeping up with it, because that's something I ran on in 2010. It was done more politically because there was more stuff in the background that had to do with health insurance and that sort of thing.
So, what, so what, uh, Mayor Pretend Hawkins is alluding to is that the, uh, that, at that time, council members got health insurance through the city.
They got stuck if we're not taking the health insurance.
Right, or, or get a stipend for taking, I think, $350 a month, I think it was. And so, uh, what they did was not only cut the salary in half, but also pre- precluded any future, um, council member from getting health insurance, but not getting rid of it for themselves. So, that became an issue in the campaign, as we both know. But anyway, that's history, so, it's kind of where we want to go from there.
I, I was gonna say that I, I think that, you know...
Well, actually, I remember, actually, we're in questions to staff, so go get a public comment, so discussion can go down with...
Okay, that's cool.
So, any further discussions of staff, for staff? Uh, questions for staff, I'm sorry. I've been off since 4:30 this morning, so, um, public comment, is there anyone like to speak on this side?
Um, I don't know all the, I just saw this come up on the agenda, so I don't have any idea of the details, and you talked about a lot of, you know, different aspects of it, but I think our city council, um, needs to be compensated fairly. You guys do a very, very good job, and considering what just happened with TCEDA, you've just saved us a whole lot of money, so, thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson? Anyone else like to speak on this side? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a motion. Or not, uh, possible direction, okay, but not a motion, right?
Not a motion, if you want it, if you want to consider it further, the direction would be to have a city attorney prepare the appropriate ordinance to reinstitute what's provided for in the government code.
And, or, and potential adjustment, okay, so the parameters of, if you want an adjustment, do you want it to be at the cap, do you want a bill of the 5% adjustment since the last time it was adjusted, what are the options that we use direction?
Um, I, I just want to say that this, for me, is not about the money, it's about what's fair and what's just, and, um, I'm a little disappointed this hasn't come up before. Um, before I would ask about the adjustment, I'd want to, I'd kind of like to see that, what those dollars, what those dollars would be, um, personally. I just would like the, the previous pay reinstituted, but I want to see what the 5% over these years would actually, it seems like it would be a fair amount of money.
So, are we discussing, is there any...
Uh, the only thing I will say is, I agree with option number one, and I, I've agreed with that for quite some time, and I think all of us should be paid the same amount.
Well, one thing I did want to bring up, and I've talked to several people, um, several people probably about my age, maybe a little bit younger, um, I use, I know I personally use a good bit of my paid time off vacation time to go to different meetings and that sort of thing. I'm not complaining, so that's, that's not the meaning of it. But, but I will say that for someone who has to take time off, as I did between 2010 and 2014, that did not have, received any vacation time, um, it really makes a difference trying to feed children and that sort of thing. So, that's kind of where I stand, is for people who are younger, that are raising families and that sort of thing, it does make a difference, whether it's $5, $20, that sort of thing, it, it does make a difference, especially if you're having to leave work for three hours to go to a meeting, and then you come back, go back to work and that sort of thing, it, it does make a difference, and it does make things a little bit easier, if that makes sense.
And that's appropriate where needed. I'm a little embarrassed because I don't want to be seen as virtue signaling, but I have viewed this for myself as just a public service, and am perfectly content with where it is right now. I, I think for a full-time job, just about like for the supervisors, that is appropriate to make it so that it is not exclusive to the retired or the wealthy. The, this job does not require enough of me to see it in those terms, and I'm pretty happy where it is.
Okay. Did, I did ask, already guys both have given that, okay. Well, I, I, I kind of disagree with you on that respect. We put a, we can't put in a lot of hours, and we do put in a lot of hours. Not only it means we, we go to other, we're assigned other means to go to, um, for my example, I have to make sure that my schedule is work schedule, I work retail, so my work schedule doesn't have, uh, I can accommodate all, all of that, and sometimes that doesn't happen, so, um, I think what we need to at least be able to, uh, cover expenses for what we do. Right now, we're, uh, if you put 10 hours a week into it, no, we get, uh, 10 hours a month into it, you're getting paid, um, $1,250 an hour. So, um, and, you know, we do, certainly, I, I do more, about that, or more, um, probably more now than, in this position. So, um, so I, I don't have a problem with it, I think you, you want to attract the, and it's not much, attitude is not really that much of an attraction, I don't think.
That might be different.
But, but at least it will cover some of the expenses that you have to, to, you know, versus time off or going to events that, you know, that you don't get compensated for, like, through, through, we don't have expense, we don't think, I don't think, oh, I think one council member's taking expenses for a, a thing to go to, but the rest of us to have it. So, I think it's, um, and, and also, we're not asking to have our, and wouldn't get our health and to have, get health insurance, so, reinstated, so, um, I, I think it's a good thing, actually, so...
So, um, let, let staff do this, we'll, we'll look at the, we'll look at what the salary is under the statute and whether, given the circumstances, there's adjustments that would apply, and then report back to you to what, what you would be eligible for or entitled to, or whatever the right word would be, and then you can give us direction, once you know what that number is, and maybe what the statute for it is, but we'll look at, depending on how, what actions were taken and when, there might be adjustments that are applicable.
I suppose another option would be is, uh, the increase would go towards some, like go, going to, uh, going to, like league events, or like going to the conferences or...
Those expenses are... Those, those expenses are reimbursable.
Oh, okay, all right.
And not considered part of your compensation.
Okay, all right.
And I just would like to add, if someone is uncomfortable receiving this money, you can also donate it to a good cause.
Yeah, that's provided for in statute as well.
It is.
Should be voluntarily, uh, applying to compensation.
I thought it was a new idea.
Okay, is there any, do you have staff direction then, best one?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on the number, see what it is.
Okay, all righty.
It's not like it's gonna happen, I mean, there's time between...
Yeah, it won't happen until the next election, I know the 5% after that, which is... Item J then, monthly reports, we've got monthly reports from the community development department, the fire department, the police department, and the public works department. Item K is the Vision Sonora Committee Report, there's none. Item L is communications, there are none. Item M is council member department head reports, looking back to the community development director, Kellogg. Looking back to the community development director, show off.
So because we're a ranching family, we worry about the weather all the time, but Saturday was a little stressful around the city as we were trying to figure out, were we going to pull off a new event or was it going to downpour on us? We did have several groups that canceled. We can't blame them. Same thing for the farmer's market, which kicked off on Saturday. They had some vendors that decided not to take the risk. But actually, we were pretty blessed because about the time we were winding up and starting to clean up and get the streets back open is when it really came down. So it was a good event. I think we brought a lot of people downtown. I think people really enjoyed it. So from that, we are very happy. It would have been a lot easier if, for the first time, that the weather had been a little bit nicer to us, but it could have been worse. It could have been yesterday when I was looking at snow out my window, so... But yeah, so it was a good event, and we were excited, and we... I think it's going to be something that can grow and be something to benefit the city for years to come as we morph it and change it. And I think the basic structure is there that we need. So anyway, wanted to let you know that it did happen, and we got through it. And Matt was down doing window decorations with Sheila, and there was a lot of people involved in it. It was a group effort, staff as well as some people from the community, but we were able to get it done, so.
Okay. Masonry Services Director Gorstie. Okay. Chief Peddewell.
Okay, thank you.
Chief New.
The fire department and the historical companies did participate in the Wild West Fest, and were lucky enough to sell out, so that was good. We had a great event. The weather did hold out for us. It was actually quite nice in the 70s, so it was humid, but it was okay. I just want to let you know, we will be... The fire department will be participating in a burn in Mewop on the 23rd. It will be training for search and rescue inside of the donated house that was given to the Mewop Fire Department and the Penar Fire Department. And then they'll be doing a schedule of live burns on Monday, the 27th. And we have a couple of our in-chins and volunteers going up to participate in that. So other than that, we're still waiting for the burn permits to be expired or deleted from CalFire, but as of yet with the weather, we're probably going to have a few more weeks of open burning with a valid permit, so. Thank you, guys.
Student Council.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Masonry... No.
Nothing further, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Wes.
Okay. On the 8th, I attended the 2019 Peace Officers Memorial, very sobering the lives that have been lost and continue to be lost of our peace officers. I attended the Twalney County Transportation Council meeting, also the Twalney County Visitors Bureau Tourism Showcase that evening. On the 14th, we had the Vision Sonora Design and Marketing Committee. On the 15th, we had the Energy Action Plan Working Group meeting. On the 16th, I attended the CSEDD Board meeting and updated both Tim and Collette on what happened at that meeting. I also attended the Front Porch Open House. As you all know, they moved into the city. What a fabulous building they have, and they have a great program that was developed by one of their, by the brother of Zach Britton, and it has to do with math. And yeah, get more math. Great program. On the 17th, I attended the 20th anniversary of the David Lambert Center, and also attended the Sonora Chamber Film, Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid. On the 18th, I didn't... I had a meeting in Sacramento, but I made it back in time to go to the Sonora Opera Hall for the sip and taste, and the vendors that were there said that it was... That a lot of people came in. So that's it.
Okay. That's our research.
I... On the 14th, I attended the Vision Sonora Design and Marketing Committee meeting. On the 15th, I attended the senior forum at Sonora Bible Church that was put on by Sonora Area Foundation. Those are actually really informative and good meetings. I also attended the Front Porch Open House. Really an extraordinary company. They give so much back to this community, and really their focus is education in addition to the actual work that they do, but they give probably hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of scholarships every single year. I'm really grateful to Front Porch. I also attended the David Lambert 20th anniversary, and just the dedication of Jeanette Lambert and the work that they do, I think we all should applaud them. And just on the 18th, I'd like to thank Rochelle and thank the city for... I was downtown for the farmer's market, and then I stayed for the other, some other events. And the city was just vibrant and hopping, and it was like a real community. It was just, it was a lovely place to be, so thank you. It was really a success.
Mayor Pretend?
So on Saturday, I got to present a written to Diamondback Real for their best dress window. Late Name River had painted the window really, really neat. So I got to walk around with my wife, and then Sheila was there. We walked with her to pictures, all the windows that were decorated. And yeah, downtown was really, really vibrant, and the farmer's market, it was just really good to see. So I wish Sheila was here tonight to say great job, because she was out. I saw her doing all... I know it takes a thinking, but it was just really, really good to see, so that's all I had.
Okay. Councilor Boll?
I think that it would be a good time for us to go forward, looking towards a, or directing staff to arrange a retreat or a planning strategy meeting for the city council going forward. It's been some time since we've had one, and I think that that would perhaps be useful.
Okay.
I would agree.
That's not... We can't direct at this point because that's not on the agenda, that's just a report.
It's a suggestion I can do.
Well, it is one thing we're working on. We'll probably have our economic development, whatever we end up calling it, workshop before that.
I'm bringing it up now, because this is the only forum where I can speak with everyone.
Okay. And that's it. Okay. On Wednesday, May 8th, I also attended the Peace Officers Memorial and the TCTC, the Transportation Council meeting, and also the Tourism Showcase. Got to see a lot of Kanye on that day. Let's see. We had, on the May 14th, we had the Solid Waste Committee meeting. First time I've been in several months, and it was a, basically, there's two new members from the county on that, Anaya Kirk and Ryan Campbell. And so a lot of it was just going over what solid waste was all about, what that committee was all about. One thing that was, had been discussed in the past was the possibility of generating energy from the burning or oxidation, or however you want to characterize it, of waste. And staff kind of came back with some rough numbers, and it's almost untainted for various reasons, cost and regulation. Let's see, what else? I regret that I couldn't make it to the Library Center 20th anniversary. I was extended on that day for... And also worked during the Wild West Fest, so I'm missing, and I'm glad you got to make the choices, so. Other than that, I think that's it, and if there's no further business, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.